Thank you. It's consideration of a donation to the Carson International Sculpture Garden featuring a Turkish cultural monument. And we have a couple of elected officials here. And we're going to ask the elected officials to speak first. Don't get mad at them because they're elected officials. First, we have two mayors. We have the mayor of Glendale and Mayor Sinanian. Are you present?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. Okay, mayor. Terrific. His rep is here. We have another elected official, the city clerk of Glendale, and it will be the third speaker. And then we have a representative, an assembly member here as well. So, mayor, please do us the honor of speaking before us. We normally restrict it to three minutes, but because you're a mayor, you may speak as long as you want. Just you know what I'm talking about.
I know very well, believe me.
Behind you, you know, mayors love to speak. It's dangerous to give a mayor a microphone. I know that. And I'm sure you know that as well, mayor. So, please.
I assure you, I know what that's all about. Thank you. Honorable mayor, council members, my name is Zadis Sinanian. I'm the mayor of Glendale, California, a city of approximately 200,000 residents. Approximately half of them are Armenian-Americans, and most of them are descendants of survivors of Armenian genocide. I am one such person. My namesake, Zadis Sinanian, was born just 80 kilometers outside of Constantinople, now Istanbul, and subjected to the horrible, horrible genocide of 1915, was lucky enough to survive. That's the only reason I stand in front of you today. Many, many, hundreds of thousands and over a million people are not so lucky. Now, I'm here to vociferously oppose the donation, installation, whatever you want to call, the statue to one Mustafa Kemal, also known as Atatürk, in a public park belonging to the great city of Carson, California, a city that's in Southern California, a city that's in many ways can be considered as neighboring to the city of Glendale. We're all in the same geographic area. And there'll be many people here who will impart their personal stories as to why they're here to oppose it. There'll be others here who will speak in favor of the donation of the monument. And I can only guess as to what their arguments are going to be. I can guess that the most vocal and the most brazen of them and shameless will simply say that, no, what, Armenian genocide never happened. That's a mechanism that was used in the past. Some people still cling to it, but by and large, it's been dealt with and put aside. Those that are more intelligent will use a more nuanced argument. They will argue that a genocide was the genocide. That was the young Turk government, itihadists, and Mustafa Kemal Atatürk had nothing to do with it. And the point I'd like to make to you that that is absolutely not the case. I highly recommend that if you have the time, you find the time, and I know how busy you are, you study the book written by Stefan Irig called Atatürk in the Nazi Imagination, where the author pretty much describes how the ideology created by Atatürk, the ideology that he embraced, and the ideology really that exists in the Republic of Turkey today was a foundational element in the Nazi ideology as well, just as much so as the one created by Benito Mussolini, the fascist ideology. Now, what happened when Mustafa Atatürk came to power? He not only embraced the outcome of the genocide, the results of the genocide, but he completed the genocide, not only against the Armenian people, but also the other ethnic elements in what used to be Ottoman Empire, the Greeks, the Assyrians, and later on, the Kurds. Upon coming to power, not even having fully come to power, the first thing that Mustafa Kemal Atatürk did was to attack the Republic of Armenia, a small territory where hundreds of thousands of survivors of the genocide had found refuge. He eliminated the republic. He occupied part of the eastern Armenia, the Karst region, the Ardahan regions. Then he moved on to Cilicia, where he ethnically cleansed, expelled all those that had survived the genocide. And the descendants of those people, a lot of them are in this hall. They ended up in Lebanon and Syria. Next, he moved on to the Greeks. Smyrna, a beautiful city on the Black Sea coast, was attacked, sacked, burned, the Greek and Armenian residents raped, and very few survivors managed to make it out to the sea. And their descendants are also here today. You'll hear from them. Next, he moved on to the, those Armenians that had actually accepted Islam. In order to avoid being subjected to genocide, he attacked the population of Darim in a most horrible massacre in 1937, '38. Then, his government, and maybe he may have passed on at this point, but the ideology and the government survived, moved on to the Alexandretta area, next to the Mediterranean coast, and the survivors of the Armenian genocide who had found refuge there were expelled again to Syria and Lebanon. Of course, the struggle that the Kurdish people are waging today in the Republic of Turkey is ongoing, and finally, they've been allowed to call themselves Kurds as opposed to Turks, mountain Turks, and other alternative versions of this that has been forced upon them. Today's Kemalist Turkey, again, the country whose ideology was based on the ideology of Mustafa Kemal, aka Atatürk, lives and is strong. Anyone in Turkey of Armenian descent, like a well-known journalist who spoke about the Armenian genocide, actually called for reconciliation, are being assassinated in the streets of Istanbul. The Republic of Armenia, which exists today, a small shadow of historical Armenia, is not only deprived of any diplomatic relations with Turkey, Turkey will not establish diplomatic relations with them, but it's being blockaded by Turkey, an act of war. Blockade in order to starve out those survivors, the descendants of the survivors of Armenian genocide, who live in the tiny Republic of Armenia. And again, I urge you all to consider these facts, and just all you have to do is Google Mustafa Kemal Atatürk and read his history, his past, the path that he's traveled, and the government, the state, the ideology that he has created, which is the dominant state ideology of the Republic of Turkey today. And don't do the misjudged justice to the city of Carson and accept this gift, because I know there are some great people. There's a Filipino national hero that, there's a statue in your park, and my Filipino residents and friends tell me that they'd be highly insulted if Mustafa Kemal Atatürk's statue was situated next to it. And these are people who are laughing at the concept of genocide.
Mayor, I'm going to take care of them. All right. You need to show respect to the speakers.
He needs the speaker.
No, no. You will be ejected from this room if you argue with me. Now, show respect to the speakers. There's going to be a difference of opinion this evening. And if you cannot be dignified and respect them, and do not heckle the speaker, if you have to heckle the speaker because you can't resist it, then go outside, look at the monitor, and heckle the monitor, but not taking the time and disrespecting the people in this room. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm almost, thank you. Thank you, mayor, dear.
And you're going to conclude, right?
I'm concluding, and I will leave you with this idea. If Mustafa Kemal Atatürk finds a place in that park, I think you'll morally have to prepare space also for Pol Pot and Adolf Hitler. Thank you very much. Please vote against it.
Okay. Now, we have a large number of speaker cards. Joy, or you could hold those cards up. Those are the cards on this agenda item? Hold those up so people in the audience can see the speaker card. Okay. Now, this means, thank you, Joy, you're like Van and White. Okay. This means that I'm going to now request five speakers from each side. And the mayor, you will be counted as one. And we have, I know, of course. I've already announced the other mayor. And so, otherwise, we will be here till tomorrow morning, and you all have to go to work in Carson. So, God forbid that. But kidding, all kidding aside, I'm going to call up the mayor of Montebello, and then I'm going to call up the city clerk of the city of Glendale. And now, if you could choose two more speakers that are in concurrence with the first speaker, that would work. And then, I need five speakers representing another perspective. And so, you have to now make that decision among yourselves. Of course, you have a right to speak for three minutes each, but five speakers from each side would be much more appropriate. If we do three minutes each, at the end of an hour, we're going to stop, go on with the rest of our agenda, and then the people remaining here at midnight tonight or so can speak if they want to. But I really recommend the five speakers each. So, Mr. Mayor, Hagenian?
That's correct.
All right. Please address us.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council members. I'd like to congratulate both the mayor pro tem and the council member on their reelection.
Thank you.
You deserve it. It's been more than 10 years since I last attended a Carson council meeting. I never thought I would be here to share a tragic story with you all about a time when my grandfather, at the tender age of 12 years old, witnessed the assassination of his father, my great-grandfather, and his brother, my great-uncle, by a group of Turkish soldiers. My grandfather suffered for years from the mental trauma he experienced, watching his father and uncle as they stood on their knees, taking multiple bullets to the head. My grandfather and his mother lost everything they had, including all the adult males. This applied to both sides of my family. I basically live with a broken family tree. In 1949, my grandfather moved to the United States. He settled in Detroit, Michigan, where he worked as a janitor for Ford Motor Company. This was his first experience with freedom, freedom of speech, freedom of religion, two things Armenians were forbidden to enjoy living under Turkish rule. He eventually settled in Montebello in 1957, where he experienced the American dream of homeownership. However, the scars of the genocide never healed. He made me walk with him on April 24th, every year, to the Armenian genocide martyrs monument. Not a word or a smile on his face, just silence and tears. I ask myself, Mr. Mayor, how could you entertain the idea of erecting a monument, symbolizing a man who rose to power at the death of my family and 1.5 million Armenians? Do you realize that Kemal Atatürk completely decimated the village of Hadjen, the origin of my name? Now, I read, the recommendation is to approve, it's a consideration of a donation to the Carson International Sculpture Garden featuring a Turkish cultural monument. Now, I highly doubt that if a city was going to entertain a German cultural monument, the German government would recommend a monument of Adolf Hitler. This is what you're entertaining this evening. Mr. Mayor and council members, it's an insult, it's an insult by the proponents of this to propose this in the city of Carson. I am a great-grandchild of a genocide victim and a grandchild of a survivor. Please do the right thing and vote no.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would respectfully ask that of the other individuals who are allowed to speak, at least one be from the Greek-American community. I know that there have been individuals here who have tried to paint this as an Armenian versus Turk issue, which I could tell you is nothing further from the truth. In fact, I come here before you as an American born in Boston, Massachusetts, proud to serve my country as an elected official in the city of Glendale, and this has nothing to do with an ethnic division. This is a simple issue of human rights and dignity. On September 14th, 1922, Mr. Mayor Dorothea Christopulos and Krikor Razarian took their two children in their arms and fled to the port in Smyrna as their home was being burnt and destroyed by the orders of Mustafa Kemal Atatürk. During their escape for life, a Turkish soldier killed one of their children by striking him across his head so hard with the butt of his rifle that his neck was broken. Driven into the waters of the sea, they were picked up by an Italian merchant ship and taken to safety, but safety that was far removed from their ancestral homeland, where they and their predecessors had lived for centuries. Dorothea and Krikor were my great-grandparents, and I am here today because Atatürk failed in his efforts to eradicate them. The story, the story is similar, if not identical, to that of thousands of Greeks and Armenians who did not conform to the nationalist Turkish ideals of Mustafa Kemal Atatürk. Yet today, you are considering honoring a man who has the blood of hundreds of thousands of innocent lives on his hands. I do not object to gesture that honors and recognizes Turks for their accomplishments. If you'd like to honor someone of Turkish descent, honor Orhan Pamuk, the only Turkish writer to ever win a Nobel Prize in Literature. Unfortunately, unfortunately, Mr. Pamuk is in exile because in 2005, he was put on trial in Turkey after he dared to speak openly about the Armenian genocide. With this monument, you honor someone, Atatürk, who spits on our American values and ideals. Freedom of speech is not a right that the people in Turkey have today. I find it ironic that we try to honor the very person who destroyed this right in the establishment of his modern so-called Turkish Republic. If this is the path we want to walk upon, then as the mayor of Glendale suggested, we ought to consider putting up monuments to individuals such as Augusto Pinochet and Joseph Stalin. And if the NFL does bring a team here, perhaps it should be called the Bloody Hands or the Bullies.
So, if we could have two more speakers, any representative, you want to volunteer yourself? You have to make that decision.
Now, the two speakers we're asking for, you need to decide quickly. And as I said, if we have more time, we'll bring in more speakers, but it depends on the time. We started this 20, what, about 17 minutes ago? Yes, sir?
Thank you, mayor, council members. Mustafa Kemal Atatürk continued the Armenian genocide when it came to power between 1919 and 1923. And one example is this. Edith Woods, an American nurse at the time in that area, this is what she wrote as a witness from what she saw. "It was like an endless train." She wrote this in 1922. "The children would often be dead before I had taken their names. Forty to fifty of the older women died each day. Their mouths were massive sores, and their teeth were dropping out, and their feet, those poor, bleeding feet. Deportation ensured death, and a far more horrible death than massacre. Unless one sees these things, it is difficult to believe that such monstrous cruelty and barbarity exist in the world." Unquote. This is 1922. Keep in mind, it's when Kemal was in power, in coming to power at that time. He ruled the areas in which this happened. The stories of ongoing deportations and massacres between 1919, 20, 21, 22, 23 continued. And since US policy changed a bit, some Americans tried to cover that up. But here's what Alan Dulles said to those Americans trying to cover up. Alan Dulles, at that time, was a State Department official who later became director of the CIA. Here's what he said. "Conferentially, the State Department is in a bind. Our task will be simple if the reports of atrocities could be declared untrue or even exaggerated, but the evidence, alas, is irrefutable." Eventually, Mustafa Kemal became the government in 1923, and Kemal Atatürk was hardly, his government was hardly a democracy. He was a dictator. And he himself one time said, this is a quote from a film glorifying him, made in 1959 by CBS, and he's quoted as saying, "I am a dictator so that Turkey will never again have another dictator." He acknowledged it. But in the future, afterwards, Turkey's history with democracy has been quite problematic. In the 1920s and '30s, inside Germany, Turkey was, Atatürk's, Turkey was glorified. Here are some examples from the book that Mayor Sinanian just mentioned earlier by Stefan Burig, and he says this. "Atatürk was praised widely in the German press. Quote, 'For the Nazis, Turkey was not the Old East, but a standard bearer for the modern nationalist totalitarian politics that they wished to bring to Germany.'" "Nazis grew up in this post-war fixation with the new Turkey and its leader." Next. "They built," the Nazis, "they built their ideas of strong, one-man leadership, pure nation, and anti-democracy ideas through the political person of Kemal Atatürk." "Atatürk's imagery in the German public opinion was frequently and ubiquitously, frequently presented with these words, that Germany is looking for a, quote, 'a German Mustafa.' In fact, numerous German Mustafas." Keep in mind, Atatürk's name initially was Mustafa Kemal. Next. "Many Nazi writers, including Eric Ludendorff," and we know Eric Ludendorff's connection to Hitler, "said this. He proposed that Hitler should become a German Mustafa, so that he, Hitler, could attempt to translate the Turkish example by action." Next. And this should be, many Nazi publications glorified, again, Atatürk. And here's another one. One publication on its front page said this. "The German National Socialism of Adolf Hitler and Turkish Kemalism are closely related." Next. "In 1924, on the front page of a major paper, it was suggested that, quote, 'What happened to the Armenians might very well happen to the Jews in future Germany.'" This is the front page in 1924 in Germany.
We're going to ask you to conclude.
Next, one final one. Hitler likened the Greeks and Armenians to the Jews because, quote, "They have the specific disgraceful characteristic we condemn in Jews. The destruction of the Armenians was seen as, quote, 'one precondition for Atatürk's success,' as defined in Nazi texts. According to Nazi writers, these, the ethnic cleansing of Armenians and Greeks constituted the precondition for the new Turkey. Quote, 'Only through the annihilation of the weak in Armenian tribes in Anatolia were the creation of a Turkish nation-state and the formation of an unflawed Turkish body of society within one state was possible.'" Thank you for your attention.
We would like to have one more speaker opposed to the public art going into the sculpture garden. Yes, sir?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Ailes Anagnos. I'm the vice president of the American-Hellenic Council, one of the largest Greek-American organizations in California. Like many Californians, I'm an immigrant. I came here 69 years ago, in 1946, after having served four years in the Greek army, fighting on the side of the Americans. The Greek army in Greece fought for the Americans both in the First and the Second World War. Mustafa Kemal was a general in an army that fought against the United States. Why would you want to have a monument for a general who fought against the United States? Mustafa Kemal is guilty of slaughter of tens of thousands of Greeks, Armenians, Kurds. My own grandfather and his family were in the city of Smyrna, which was sacked and burned to the ground during the, under, by troops commanded by Kemal Atatürk. Many people trying to escape the flames and the slaughter jumped into the waters of the harbor to save themselves, and they drowned. By current standards, Kemal Atatürk is a war criminal. I urge you not to embarrass the city of Carson by allowing a monument in favor of a war criminal. The city of Carson deserves better. Thank you.
I'm now going to ask for five speakers that support the gift of public art to the Carson International Sculpture Garden, which, by the way, has the theme of world peace and recognizing, recognizing, if you don't believe in world peace, you may leave anytime. Now, recognizing heroes and heroines, men and women, that have brought democracy, liberation to their culture. So, would you like to address us? If you can keep to five minutes, is that?
I think three, three would be fine, three to five.
Okay.
I'm Susan Sardar, and I would like to first state that my late father was a colonel in the US Army. He fought in the Korean War, the Vietnam War, had a degree in history. And so, it is, I want to thank the city council of Carson for this opportunity to speak and to commend you for pursuing your vision of the Carson International Sculpture Garden, dedicated to world leaders of peace and democracy. Ultimately, the garden will be an outstanding creation and a source of pride for the city. For many communities, selection of a leader could cause internal debate, but in the Turkish community, there is only one hero who stands out. There is only always one, and it is Mustafa Kemal Atatürk. In his short life, he changed a remnant of a war-torn empire into a modern democratic nation. He instilled freedom and equality for its citizens, especially women, irrespective of ethnic background, religion, economic status. He modernized political, legal, economic, educational, and social systems. Because he so valued peace and democracy, he still holds today a place of honor and respect in the international realm. In 1981, the United Nations declared that year to be the year of Atatürk, so as to recognize and acknowledge him for his exceptional efforts in leadership, reform, and peacemaking. He was even nominated for the Nobel Peace Prize by a former wartime enemy. When Atatürk died, Winston Churchill said, "Not only is this a great loss for his country, but also a great loss for Europe." Churchill called Atatürk the "Father of Modern Turkey, a great man and a great hero." In 1963, President Kennedy said that the name of Atatürk reminds mankind of the historical accomplishments of one of the greatest men of this century, that this leadership inspired the Turkish nation, and that he demonstrated farsightedness in the understanding of the modern world. That's what Kennedy said. Ben Gurion, a prime minister of Israel, said that Atatürk was, quote, "A brave and great reformist that no other people have ever known," end of quote. A lengthy list of other tributes to Atatürk from many world leaders and centuries is easily found online. There are monuments, memorials, and places dedicated to Atatürk all over the world, not just in Turkey, including Washington DC, Australia, New Zealand, Japan, Chile, Cuba, Venezuela, India, Israel, Amsterdam, Netherlands, and there are others. Our team of artists and writers and buildings, builders have been communicating and working with the city of Carson since midnight, since mid-2012 to help achieve your vision of the International Sculpture Garden, and we very much look forward to the start of construction. Again, thank you for the opportunity to voice my encouragement. Again, thank you for the opportunity to voice my encouragement for the city to finalize this proposal.
We have four more speakers and...
Next, Ms. Roseanne.
Yes, would you like to come forward?
Dear Mr. Mayor and Carson City Council members, I would like to thank you all for such an invaluable opportunity to honor our leader, a leader who deserves to be revered, Mustafa Kemal Ataturk. Mustafa Kemal Ataturk, the father of the Turks, has many significant national and universal qualities...
Please use the microphone. Put it, put it in front of you, yeah.
Sorry, is it better?
Yes.
Okay. Mustafa Kemal Ataturk, the father of the Turks, has many significant national and universal qualities, proving that he deserves to be commemorated, remembered, and symbolized, not only for the Turkish people, but also for anyone who advocates freedom, democracy, enlightenment, and civil liberties. Ataturk created a free nation from the remnants of the Ottoman Empire, which was under the hegemony of many nations after World War I. The Ottoman Empire was under attack from all angles and borders, and it was about to go under the League of Nations mandate as a consequence of World War I. Ataturk did not accept any kind of a dependent system, but he fought for his country and people's freedom and political autonomy. At the end, he was successful. And thanks to him, since the foundation of the Turkish Republic in nineteen twenty-three, Turkey has been an independent, secular, and democratic country. Ataturk is an admirable leader, not only for the Turkish people, but also for everyone who seeks the same rules and values. By following Ataturk's principles, today, a people can rise from dark times and become an enlightened, independent, and modern nation. Anyone from any nation, from any culture, who sees the Ataturk Monument will understand and appreciate the universality of his principles. Republicanism, for example, government through the will of the people, parliamentary elections, rotation of office, and popular sovereignty. Anyone who values civil liberty and democracy will share the same principle. Following republicanism, nationalism, and secularism are Ataturk's next two principles. These terms complement each other in many aspects. Ataturk defines the concept of nation as "the people who always love and seek to exalt their country and family, and who know and exercise their duties and responsibilities towards the democratic, secular, and social state for common benefits and interests of the residents of the country, regardless of their ethnic or racial background." Secularism makes it possible for all people, from all religions and beliefs, to live in harmony and to strive towards the same national goals. Aren't these the conditions that all people want to live in? Anyone who wants to live in freedom, and anyone who wants to have a high quality of life, where there is nothing but progress and individual success within a glorified society, will be inspired by such ideals and principles. The Ataturk Monument will be a symbol of freedom, democracy, secularism, and many more cherished principles for all people. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're honored to have a representative of the Turkish government here tonight. We have the Council General of Turkey. I hope to be able to have a, a meeting with the Council General of Armenia as well in the not-too-distant future, but she is here this evening to address this issue on our agenda, and like the American elected officials that spoke... Okay. We're, we're going to give the Council General the opportunity to speak with no time limit, like I, like I did the mayor. And now, we're going to ask her to please come forward. Okay, shh, thank you. Okay. No, they're, they're... Okay. Good. Shh. Okay. Council General, we have an American protest going on here, and we're going to ask you to please come forward. With all due respect to you and your stature and the diplomatic corps, we'd like you to address the members of the City Council at the podium, and our acting city manager will direct you along with our staff.
We did not do it for the mayor.
So, we're ready for the Council General when she, as soon as she is ready. And be sure the green light is on at the base of your microphone, and speak directly into the microphone, and please address the legislative body. Anyone in the audience, I'm going to ask you to, to please be quiet.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for having me tonight. I am here, as requested from the city of Carson. I'm here today to declare the support of the Republic of Turkey for the Ataturk Monument Project and to explain the importance of this project for the Turks living all around the world, as well as those who uphold the values and ideas of Ataturk. To understand the true significance of Ataturk and why we cherish him so greatly, if you allow me, I'd like to describe Ataturk from the eyes of some foreign statesmen. After that, I would like to mention three people that had an important impact on the life of Ataturk. Winston Churchill, Prime Minister of the United Kingdom, upon the death of Ataturk, expresses his thoughts as such. "Ataturk, who saved Turkey during the war and revived the Turkish nation, is not only a loss for his country, but it is also a great loss for Europe. The sincere tears that people from all classes have shed are nothing more than the true reflection of this great man, the father of the modern Turkey. The sincere tears shed after him by all classes of people is nothing other than an appropriate manifestation to this great hero and modern Turkey's Ata." John F. Kennedy, on the twenty-fifth commemoration of Ataturk's death, issued a statement saying, "Ataturk reminds mankind of the historical accomplishments of one of the greatest men of this century. His leadership gave inspiration to the Turkish nation, farsightedness in the understanding of the modern world, and courage and power as a military leader. It is without a doubt that another example cannot be shown indicating greater successes than the birth of the Turkish Republic and ever since then Ataturk's and Turkey's broad and deep reforms undertaken, as well as the confidence of a nation in itself." Bill Clinton, on December thirty-one, nineteen ninety-nine, when delivering a speech during the Millennium Around the World Celebration remarks. "In the time it took the light from Orion to reach Earth, Leif Erikson sailed, Gothenburg printed, Gomorrah dared, Shakespeare wrote, Elizabeth ruled, Mozart composed, Jefferson drafted, Bonneville liberated, Lincoln preserved, Einstein dreamed, Ataturk built, Roosevelt read, Gandhi preached, Metal Teresa healed, Mandela triumphed." Now, I would like to briefly talk about the three people that had an important role in the life of Ataturk. The first gentleman was a man who had loved Ataturk before his departure to Samson, where he was to start the national struggle, that there was a ship in the Black Sea waiting to sink the Bandirma boat that was to carry Ataturk on his journey. By doing so, he had saved the life of Ataturk. This gentleman's name was Barch Kerestegyan. Kerestegyan was also the first parliamentarian of Armenian descent to serve in the Turkish Grand National Assembly. The second gentleman was a soldier that served in the Ottoman Army at the Syrian Front. He had drawn the attention of Ataturk during their first encounter. Ataturk, upon meeting him, had asked, had asked this young soldier to work with him at the headquarters. He had saved the life of Ataturk when Ataturk's tent was attacked. He was wounded during that attack. This man's name was Barabet Kembalyan. The third gentleman was a reserve officer at the Syrian Front. Ataturk was very much influenced by his ideas about democracy and frequently consulted him. Being a linguist, this man was invited in nineteen thirty-two to the first Turkish-language Congress supervised by Ataturk. His presentation was so impressive that he was appointed by Ataturk as a head specialist and secretary-general of the newly-founded Turkish Language Association in Ankara. Ladies and gentlemen, this man was also the person who had proposed and supported giving the last name Ataturk for Mustafa Kemal. And this gentleman's name was Agop Martayan. I think this monument will not honor, honor Ataturk, but also all of those who were willing to sacrifice their lives, as well as those who shared and continue to share the ideas and vision of a greater leader. Thank you very much.
We're gonna, we're gonna have two more speakers.
Hey, tell this guy he's down. Sit down. He just said fuck you. Sit down, please.
Okay, alright. There are children watching the television this evening, so please keep that in mind. Okay, we're gonna have two more speakers. The proposers, please choose two more speakers. Did I lose count? Was that fourth? The Council General was the fourth person, fourth speaker? Council General was the third speaker, right? So, two more.
I'm the third speaker.
Three and two is five. I think we're not, we're not going to argue about that.
Yeah, Mayor, we're on the third speaker.
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is Vega Sankor, and I'm the project manager for the Ataturk Project. I am gonna go, after all those incredible talk, I'm gonna go a little more personal myself. She's a really hard act to follow. But, um, I'd like to explain why I have been working with the city and amongst our team probably half-time, totally voluntary, and willing to put my money where my mouth is because of who Ataturk is and what the Turkish Republic stood for and what it has done in my personal life. A lot of people talked about their grandmothers or grandfathers. Let me tell you what my grandmother talked to me about. Before and during the World War I, Turkey was a land of wild, wild east. Ottoman Empire is crumbling. No law, no police, no gendarmes. You know, you don't have security for your life. You don't have safety. And I, you know, when I ask about what happened to Uncle so-and-so, they're all dying around. My other grandmother gave birth to ten children, and eight of them died. So, it was a horrible place, and I can understand if it were horrible for my grandmother, how horrible it would have been. And I empathize, and I share their pain.
Dr. Sankor, would you hold one minute, please? Okay, those of you that feel you have to have a conversation, take that conversation Okay, so, just ask the gentleman to go outside and have the conversation with you in the executive conference room or the lobby, but not in the council chambers. We do have a press box for any members of the press that want to be in the press room. We have that room available to you. Okay, Dr. Sankor?
Could I continue?
Yes, please continue.
But her story changed with the formation of the Republic after an independence war. And suddenly, there was a bright light in Turkey. It was the Republic, suddenly, you know, people were freer. There was legal system put in place so that you had, you know, safety and security of both yourself and your belongings. There was the new education system. My grandmother, you know, through her hijab, went to school at the age of thirty, and she became a very learned person. We're talking about nineteen twenties now, in Middle East, in a Muslim society, totally empowering and liberating women, men, under very, very difficult conditions. And if it were not for Ataturk, where I was born in Middle East, I could have been the fourth wife of a man in hijab and with no power. His emancipation of women, and also men, because people have been living in this empire as slaves all their lives, made me the person that I am now, a productive member of American society. I came here, I'm an immigrant, I did the American dream, now it's time for me to pay my debt. And when I look back at it, the Republic, its reforms, made an incredible difference in Turkey. It made it a NATO ally. It made us, I guess as Susan said, fight in Korea alongside American troops. But most importantly, it gave me a life where I could even be successful in the, you know, high halls of America. So, I want to celebrate my heritage. And Ataturk is George Washington of our country, the modern... The modern Turkish Republic. And there could be things that was not done right before his time, or now in Turkey, seventy years after he died, but should he, we hold him responsible for everything that went wrong in the world? Yes, maybe some German magazines, you know, wrote about him, but he was also on the cover of Times three or four times. So, I think I lost a little time there. And to me, the biggest thing he has done is brought rational thought and secularism to Turkey. So, this is what you call the mild Islam these days. That is why you have eighty million people that, you know, are not a threat, that is helping America on the fight with Taliban in Afghanistan, with ISIS in Syria. helping America on the fight with Taliban in Afghanistan, with ISIS in Syria, and other places.
Hold on, okay, shh. Those in the room who thinks they have to blurt out, shh. All you're gonna do is give Dr. Sankur more time to speak, so, please.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
But we are a nation, and we are a nation and a republic due to Atatürk. And again, I'm gonna say, when you start with the ashes of an empire, you don't become perfect in a day. You don't become perfect. But in two, three decades, the reform he has made, made, you know, set the foundation for a great society that I grew up in, and I am totally indebted to it, and that's why I'm working on this project, day and night. Put my money where my mouth is in our effort. And here are these people, they have no obligation to be here. They come because they also owe a lot of things to Atatürk, his vision, his reforms, and, you know, his getting things done, his building it, like Clinton said.
You're welcome. Okay, one more speaker in favor of the city receiving a gift of public art for Turkish Sir, are you, are you gonna be the fifth speaker? Okay, please, go ahead. So you're gonna be the fifth speaker. Like I said, other people wanna speak later on tonight. You're welcome to stay as late as you want to, but, well, you see, an hour's gonna be up in seven minutes, and we have, and this is just one agenda item of, what, thirty agenda items? And we have other people that wanna speak on other agenda items as well, so. You two of you wanna share the five minutes? You may.
I'm gonna be really short, so.
Okay, you may share the, okay.
Honorable mayor and council members, my name is Funda Gürgeze, and I'm a proud business owner in Carson. I employ currently about thirty people in multiple locations within a couple of miles of the city hall. And I've been here, a business owner, for the last five years. I've observed how the city has changed, and I applaud the city council for considering the addition of the sculpture garden. I think it's a, it's a very good step to make the city a major attraction. And I just wanna tell you that I am here today where I am because I was raised in a country in the principles of Atatürk. And for, I just wanna urge you to seriously consider taking the donation from the Turkish people here, because no matter what you're gonna hear, what objections you're gonna hear about Atatürk, for every person who thinks that his monument is gonna be an embarrassment to the city, you can find hundred people who are gonna think that it's gonna be an embarrassment not to have his monument in the sculpture garden. You cannot, if you are building an international sculpture garden honoring the world leaders, I don't, you'd be really challenged to find one leader who doesn't have any enemies. That's the very definition of a leader. So, once again, I applaud you for considering the donation, and thank you.
You're gonna be limited to two minutes because you're sharing the five minutes with the last person. Two minutes on.
Just a little, just a little story. In Turkey, we have many famous and successful Armenians, and I met, I mean, I met this en masse when I first came to the United States. When I was in Turkey, I wasn't even aware of such a thing. On my first job in America, in Santa Monica, I was a valet, and I was assigned to a high level party somewhere in the Beverly Hills. And when I found out that the catering of the party was provided by an Armenian company, I felt so happy because we shared the same food, same music, same taste. And after the car sparked, guests arrived, all the time to eat, and I so enthusiastically like seeing my brother out of, you know, away from home, went to the catering truck and introduced myself.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
Yes, sir. And I told them that I was a Turk, and he says, you're from Turkey, but are you, what are you? I said, I am a Turk, I am one hundred percent Turk. And he says, there is no food here for you. And I had to go through all my shift as a valet without food. As I said, that's how I met, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna, that's not a lie.
No, 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 sir, you're addressing us.
Yes, ma'am, I mean, sir. What I was gonna say, the lie is, when they say the Turkish soldiers burned Ismir, how, I mean, just logic, I am sure you guys are gonna go home and look up Atatürk, who is, so I'm not gonna praise him, he's big enough on his own. But why would they occupy an army? They will and still is occupying that city. Why would burn it down?
Ten seconds.
That just doesn't make any sense. That's a lie. I wanna read a quote from first Armenian president of Hovanes Kacanozon.
Sir, okay, basically, you're out of time. I'm gonna let you just finish a sentence or two, and that's it. Like I've let other people over time.
Okay, this is a quote from our first Armenian prime minister. He says, "At the beginning of the fall of 1914, when Turkey had not yet entered the war, but had already been making preparations, Armenian revolutionary bands began to be formed in Transcaucasia with great enthusiasm and especially with much uproar. Contrary to the decision taken during the general meeting at Erzurum, only a few weeks before the ARF had active participation in the formation of the bands and their future military action against Turkey." That's a quote from our prime minister.
Would you provide that in writing to us? Because your time is up. Okay? Your time is up. Okay. Are you of, oh, I don't wanna get into. Are you Armenian descent or Turkish descent, or both, or what? Okay, your time is up, so you, that's all there is, okay? Okay?
And I encourage you to please look up his disc.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to, when we get to this item on agenda, I'm gonna recommend this item be continued, meaning we don't take it up tonight for any type of vote or anything. And in the next two weeks, I hope to be able to meet with the council general of Armenia if he is available, and, shh, please, please. I would like to also let you know, okay, if you can't control yourself, okay, then you need to go out of the room, okay? There's other people in the room that have respect to them. Now, I actually had, calm down now. I actually had proposed, when this first came up a couple of years ago, that there be a peace monument of Turks and Armenians in one monument, holding hands, shaking hands. But I was told that's not gonna happen right now, so when we had approached the council generals of fifty or more countries from around the world, the first response was from the council general of the Philippines, and a Philippine natural, national hero was chosen by them, and they donated that to the city of Carson. We now have one monument in the sculpture garden. We hope to have thirty to fifty monuments in the sculpture garden. We've had many inquiries, and some committees have formed, one for Nelson Mandela from South Africa, who some people would say bad things about, okay? Some would say, okay? Now, shh. I personally have the opinion that Nelson Mandela was one of the greatest leaders of humanity that ever lived on earth. That's my opinion of him. That may not be the opinion of someone else. But in the, in the United States, we have the right of opinion, the right of expression, the right of free speech, and the right to have a different opinion, okay? And if you're not gonna yell us down, that doesn't impress anyone. Now, so therefore, we made this offer to people around the world, and we've had certain responses. The other committees, we have one for Americans like Martin Luther King and so forth. We have one for Native American, indigenous people of America to do a monument for that. So that's what the International Sculpture Garden is about. And I emphasize, the theme is world peace. Now, if my colleagues don't mind, I'm just going to, at this time, order this item continued, and we are going to take comments from the council members, of course, but I'd like to get a feeling of the council members and what they'd like to do. Let's start with Councilmember Albert Robus, who's on the Monument, Landscape and Monument Committee, Subcommittee of the City Council. Councilman Albert Robus has the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and first of all, I wanna thank all the speakers and for all of you for coming today, and I especially wanna thank and acknowledge the attendance of Council General from the Turkish Republic. Thank you for coming here, and all of you for coming here. I, with all due respect, Mr. Mayor, ask that we take the vote today. I think, I think that the people in the audience deserve to know what the outcome is, and I think there's no better time than the present to put this issue to bed once and for all.
Thank you.
Let's now go to Mayor Portem and Councilwoman Santorina.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, usually, continue items. If there's no objections, if there seem to be two objections, that being the case, we will go on to our agenda, and we will actually vote on the item tonight. So I'm going to take prerogative of the, prerogative of the mayor, and we have another council member to speak, but I'm gonna reorder the agenda so we can go to item number six. First, let's have Councilmember Davis Holmes. You now have the floor.
Well, that was gonna be my request, that we move it up and vote on it now, but thank you, 'cause I concur.
So we're gonna go to our consent calendar. You'll find it on page seven. It says, new biz, city council, new business consent items. We also have a consent calendar for our housing authority, which is only one item, item four, found on page three. And our success agency consent calendar, only one item, that's item number three, so that will be included. And so, the way we do it in Carson is this, I make a motion to approve the consent calendar, then council members can pull items off for discussion purposes, and so I would make a motion to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Let's, hold on one second. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, now we're on discussion of the motion, and I'm gonna recognize the city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have speakers signed up to speak to consent items. In addition to that, we also have, I want to note for the record, that for item six, we have two-hundred-and-ninety-eight speaker cards opposing item six, and one-hundred-and-one speaker cards supporting item number six.
Thank you. Okay, we have to follow order of business, and so now we have a motion on the floor to approve the consent calendar. We're gonna ask council members to pull items, and we have other items to, so people wanna speak on the consent calendar. So as I mentioned, patience is a virtue. I know you've taken your precious time out of your lives to come here tonight to express yourself, and it is very much appreciated. Some of you came from some distance to come to the Carson City Council chambers, but we do have the order of business that we have to take care of. And so, we have other speakers, and I'm gonna ask you to please ask them, let them come forward. Let's start with Fay Walton on item number ten. Fay Walton.
Do we need to register?
No, not yet. No, because we're not voting now. We're gonna have speaker, we're gonna have comment on consent items. Okay.
Yeah. Sorry. I just have a question.
Okay, those in the audience, if you have to have a conversation, either keep it to really, really low whisper, or take it out of the room. Hold on one second, Ms.
Yeah, we could've just doubled the size. I'm asking. Yeah, get up. I'm asking. Yeah. Mr. Mayor?
So it was a question about other speakers on item six. We will take up other speakers on item six, but we're about to vote on it. So the problem is that with so many speaker cards, you all would be here all night long and all day tomorrow, if we take up all three-hundred-plus speaker cards tonight. So we're not gonna do that. That's why I asked for five representatives from each side. I feel that was reasonable, and that's how we did it. Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, hold on a second. Okay, so we have this, we have other items on the agenda, so I'm asking you to please bear with us. Councilwoman Davis Holmes, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I would request that we take a vote on item number six before we start hearing from the other speaker card. And then we could go get on with the business that's at hand, because we have quite a few people here, and just go out of order for once a little bit.
Yeah, we can, we can do that.
Can we do that?
Okay, Ms. Walton, please be patient with us, okay? All right. Let's see what else we have.
Even before we do the rest of the speakers, just, I would request.
You said that, and I concur.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
No.
Yes, okay.
Okay, okay. Hold on one second. No, he wants to speak on item six. Wants to open up item six again. If we let you speak, we have to open up to other people, and so we'll let you speak. Are you opposed and in favor or opposed on this?
I have a letter from State Assemblyman Mike Gibson in opposition.
Answer to the question is, in favor or opposed to?
Opposed.
Okay, then we're gonna have to let a speaker. We're gonna bring another speaker in favor of it in order to balance it out.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff. My name is Barry Hes, I'm field rep for State Assemblyman Mike Gibson. I have a letter drafted by the member, as well as signed by four of the members of the California State Legislature. The letter reads, "Dear Mayor and council members, the proposed monument, the Mustafa Kemal Atatürk, excuse me, the man at the helm of the Turkish nationalist movement during the Armenian genocide, is incredibly insensitive and insulting to the memories of those who died and their surviving families. As such, I join my colleagues in the California State Legislature in opposition to the item and urge a no vote." The Armenian, the Armenian genocide took place after the fall of the Ottoman Empire during World War I. Between 1915 and 1923, more than 1.5 million men, women, and children lost their lives at the hands of the ascending Turkish power and authoritarian leader Mustafa Kemal Atatürk. Through the deportations and ethnic cleansing of Armenians from Sicily and Greeks from Antolia, Kemal silenced political dissent, targeting ethnic and religious minorities. Kemal's authoritarian rule created a one-party state with limited democratic freedom. In doing so, Kemal helped perpetuate the denial of the Armenian genocide, which remains the position of the Turkish state. The United States is one of many countries to formally recognize the Armenian genocide. Additionally, California has consistently acknowledged events, even given legal rights to victims of the genocide and their heirs. This year, the California Assembly will vote to designate the month of April This year, the California Assembly will vote to designate the month of April 2015 as California Month of Remembrance for the Armenian genocide of 1915 through 1923, and call upon the Republic of Turkey to acknowledge the facts of the Armenian genocide and to work towards a just resolution. To erect a statue of Mustafa Kemal Atatur ignores the sensitive political context behind this controversial individual and goes against the stance taken by our representative bodies at the state and federal level. Out of respect for those who perished and the loved ones they left behind, we voice our opposition sincerely, Assemblyman Mike Gibson, 64th Assembly District, Adrian Nazarene, Assembly Member, 46th Assembly District, Kacho Arigya, Assembly Member, 35th Assembly District, Scott Wilk, Assembly Member, 38th Assembly District, and Mike Gatto, Assembly Member, 43rd Assembly District. Thank you.
So we did have six speakers in favor, and this just adds another speaker, so there's six on each side. All right, now we're going to go to pulling item six off of the agenda for this vote. So I will order the agenda reordered to remove item six from the consent calendar. We have a motion on the floor. I'm going to allow that motion to be removed. The motion was to approve the consent calendar, the balance of the consent calendar, actually is what it would turn out to be. And so, the secondary motion is, Councilman Robles, you agree to remove your second?
Yes.
Okay. So now, we are going to take up only item six. Item six is, you'll find it on page seven. Consideration of a donation to the Carson International Sculpture Garden, featuring a Turkish cultural monument. I'd like to have this, the briefest staff report from the Assistant City Manager on this item. Very brief, please.
Honorable Mayor and Council, the Carson International Sculpture Garden has secured its second donation, which is a series of nine granite plaques that will educate the public on the life accomplishments of a Turkish hero and reformer. Should the City Council approve to install the sculpture concept tonight, the monument will likely be installed by November 2015. City staff has been working with American Turkish Association of Southern California, the ATSAC, has introduced a sculpture concept to the Landscape and Monument Subcommittee, Mayor Dear and Councilmember Robles, where the Subcommittee approved the concept on January 13, 2015. Since then, the ATSAC has developed plans and renderings which have already been approved by the City's Building and Safety Division.
Okay. Now, we are going to ask the council members to please register, because we had only three at the beginning. So register your attendance electronically. This is not the vote. This is just registering your presence. Please do that. Okay, note for the record, the presence of Mayor Jim Dear, Councilmember, and Mayor Portem Alito Santorina, Councilwoman Lula Davis Holmes, and Councilmember Albert Robles. So we now are going to go to an agenda item vote. Does anyone like to make a motion? The chair recognizes Councilmember Robles.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to move that we make it absolutely clear to not only all the residents of Carson, but everyone in the greater community. One is that I think the International Sculpture Garden, which was your idea, Mr. Mayor, was a great idea. And some have now come to question the wisdom of having an international sculpture garden because of tonight's item on the agenda. And that is unfortunate, because I know that wasn't the purpose of the International Sculpture Garden. The purpose of the International Sculpture Garden was to bring positive and noteworthy coverage to the city of Carson, not the type of coverage that we are receiving today, which is controversial and not positive. I am not a historian. I don't pretend to be a historian. I am not Armenian, and I am not Turkish. But I am a council member in the great city of Carson. And I know that I have to make a decision. And I listened to the Council General's comments, and I heard the quotes that Winston Churchill made, who I actually have great respect for. And if any of you have been to my office, there is one poster that I have in my office, and that is of Winston Churchill. I heard her comments, the quote of John F. Kennedy, one of our great presidents. I heard the quote from Bill Clinton, a president who I actually admire very much. I have no reason to deny the many positive attributes that the Turkish community feels that this particular Turkish ruler brought about their country, you know, with the emancipation of the, of women, and bringing them freedom in the Middle Eastern part of the world. I have no reason to deny any of that. But I also cannot deny the Armenian genocide. I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, that this type of monument would bring bad notoriety to our city, not positive. Positive things, we want Carson to be associated with positive things. And this isn't one of those, I'm sorry. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we not only not accept this gift, but that we make it clear that we will not be accepting this gift anytime in the near future.
I second that, Mr. Mayor.
Ladies and gentlemen, okay, motion by Robles, second by Santorina, to not take staff's recommendation of accepting the gift. And now we're on discussion of the motion. Is there any discussion? There's no one queued up? No discussion, meaning now we go directly to a vote? I want to say one more, one more thing, though, before we actually cast the vote. I dream that future generations will be able to put differences behind them. I lived in Germany, and my German friends my age had parents and grandparents that hated the French, would kill the French if they could. I had French friends that had parents and grandparents that hated the Germans and would kill Germans if they could get their hands on their necks. But my friends said, "We were not alive during World War II. Why should we bear hatred for people we've never met?" Okay. It's just a, shh, calm down. Okay, thank you. So that principle should apply in America. And, you know, you know, we have to accept that there were great, great inhumanities to man that still go on today. We have people in ISIS chopping off people's heads. That is, that is, that is the way of an uncivilized middle ages mentality. We have to teach our children that they have to understand history. We are where we are because of history. We should never forget history or the tragedy and the inhumanity to man. But we do have to move forward in life and teach our children that they have to be able to get along with one another. And the reason for that, ladies and gentlemen, is the Armenian genocide would be repeated, maybe not with Armenians or Turks, but with other groups around the world. That type of genocide has happened in Africa many times. It's happening in the Middle East today. It will happen again unless we change society. And the only way to change society is to teach children that, yes, the wrongs of the past can never be repeated. And it's unfortunate that, in the history of the world, it's incredible, the horrible brutality that men perpetrated against other men, women against, women including, when I say men, I mean mankind, meaning women and men. And that brutality has to stop someday. The only way it could stop, I would believe, is that people have to accept that that took place. And I believe the genocide that took place in 1915 needs to be recognized, okay, by the Turkish government. And just like, you know, there are people who are revisionist in history. They think they know history, and they do, basically, but then change it a little bit. If you were to compare this to when the Americans defeated the Spanish in the Philippines, and we have a Filipino cultural monument, there is a war going on. The Filipinos were fighting against the Spanish colonial masters. That's where Jose Rizal, the statue we have, he was killed by the Spanish colonial masters because he wrote two books advocating peaceful, nonviolent revolution. Now, we have to come together on issues that divide us so severely. Tonight is an example. It's severe division. How do we overcome that? Well, if I was Armenian, I would want Armenia to prosper. The border between Armenia and Turkey is closed. Young Armenians are fleeing Armenia to Europe and other parts of the world, including California, because the hopes and prospects for their good life is diminished severely because of this, this terrible unwillingness to give and compromise between Turkey and Armenia. Now, one blames the other side, the other blames the other side. I'm not taking sides on this. But I still, you may think I'm crazy for this. I'm still going to propose that there be a monument in the city of Carson's International Sculpture Garden. Let me finish my sentence before you jump to conclusions. I propose, and it may not happen in our lifetime, I acknowledge, I propose that there be a monument to Armenian and Turkish reconciliation. Why? For the children and the children's, and their future children. Because we cannot go on with hatred and animosity forever. We are doing an injustice and inhumanity to Armenian-American children and Armenian children around the world, and Turkish-American children and Turkish children around the world if we perpetrate a hatred. So therefore, people have to be willing to give a little bit. It's difficult, it's emotional, it's devastating, because we had, you had relatives that were slaughtered and killed, and I'm a history teacher, I know how brutal. It wasn't just, it wasn't just killing of people. When the Germans went to the Ottomans, and it was the Ottoman Turks that started the genocide, it was not the democratic secular nation started by Adeturk. It was Ottoman Turks. When they, when they were approached by German advisors and told, "We have a problem, the Armenians, we don't like them." The Germans said, "Well, why don't you relocate them? Why don't you force them as slaves to go out of eastern, what is now eastern, currently eastern Turkey?" It was Ottoman Empire, a vast empire around the Middle East. And the, and then, when the Germans left, the Ottomans decided, well, instead of relocating the Armenians, they decided to kill the Armenians.
Mr. Mayor?
Now, that is genocide. And we know two other facts of history, that that genocide was a cruel genocide where they would take, they would take spikes and nails and drive them into the feet of children. Adolf Hitler used the genocide to justify his genocide against Jews. Said, the Ottoman Turks got away with it. The world public opinion did not stop them. Well, naturally, it took place during a war. During a war, there is massive killing and rape and pillage constantly. So Adolf Hitler had a war.
Mr. Mayor?
Going on. So he used that excuse.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call for the questions, please.
Against the Jewish people and the non-Jewish German people, who happen to be Catholic or Unionists.
Mr. Mayor?
Or other dissidents that Adolf Hitler didn't like. So we do know that that took place. I'm being interrupted by a councilwoman, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to hold the floor, but she insists on speaking. So what is it, Councilwoman?
Mr. Mayor, I understand that this is a history lesson, but we, like you did say earlier, we have 30-some items to get to, and I'd like to call for the questions, so we can take a vote on this item.
Okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to finish what I have to say for the sake of the people in the room and the sake of future children still unborn today. We have to, ladies and gentlemen, somehow find us a way to work together. As Americans, all of you are Americans, you know, this is what democracy and America is about. So I'm going to propose, and like I said, it may not happen in our generation, I don't like to repeat myself, but I did this time, that a monument be built, a peace monument. If the Koreans and Japanese can do it, you know, there were terrible atrocities there, I think that we can do it in America for Americans, and set an example, and change the direction. And maybe it'll start here in California, to change that direction, the willingness to work together as Americans. So I'm going to still try to meet with the Armenian Council General, if that's possible, and other interested parties, Armenian representatives of organizations or individuals, and Turkish representatives, individuals. I'm going to make an attempt to try to get something that both Armenians and Turks can agree on. Now, like I said, that may not be possible, but, you know, in America, we try anyway to move forward in that direction. So having said that, we're going to go down to a vote. I was intended to vote yes on this, accepting the staff recommendation, but I'm going to vote no for... And the reason is, I want to show unity in the City Council. I worked a couple of years already on this International Sculpture Garden with many different groups, the Honduran Council General, et cetera, et cetera, you know, from around the world, and with the Turkish group. So at this point, we're going to go to a vote, and I reluctantly vote, I'm going to vote no, because my colleagues have indicated they're going to vote no. Shh, shh, shh. Okay. Shh, calm down, calm down, okay. So...
It's supposed to be yes.
Well, let's, let's, let's...
Okay.
Settle down, everybody.
Okay, or, or...
If you wish to leave at this point, please do so quietly.
Yeah. If anyone wants to leave, please do so quietly, yes.
One second.
If you wish to leave...
If you wish to leave at this point, do so quietly, so we can continue.
Mr. Mayor?
On the motion? Oh, no, no, I'm actually voting no.
Mr. Mayor, I'm asking, I'm asking...
I'm going to clarify my position. The staff recommendation is to
For that motion to be clarified.
Accept the gift. I'm going to vote no on accepting the gift, and so I'm going to vote yes on the motion that's on the floor. In order to, because my three colleagues are going to vote yes on the motion, I'm going to set an example. Like I said, I'm a history teacher. I know that many things are said about what happened in the world, and I know that revisionism takes place. But in this particular case, I don't think that we're going to be able to move forward with this, so I'm going to cast my vote yes with my colleagues. And I'm going to try, make an attempt again to bring back some type of peace monument. If it's possible, we'll do it. If it's not possible, we won't do it. So let's go to a vote. And we register our votes, we're going to vote electronically at this time. Councilmembers, please cast your vote. Motion by Robles, second by Santorina, to not accept the staff recommendation. Please cast your vote. It'll read up there. The vote's unanimous, four to zero, for the record. Okay. We are now going to take a recess, a recess of five minutes, and you now may leave.